Hi Mike, how are you?
A secret notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Esberry Park Trust, the Middletown Patch, the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti? Mr. Cody? Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Stella?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mrs. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
Okay, now we're going to hear from our student speakers. I see Abbott here, so come on up. Physical noise.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, report. Middletown High School North has had a busy no battery. We had students from Zaragoza, Spain, I don't know if I pronounced that right, saying from Middletown families while touring places of interest in New York, Philadelphia, Washington DC, head Washington DC. They also went to Sandy Hook Six Boys and spent two days in high school north. Mrs. Hill and Mrs. Smith took the Advanced Placement United States History students to the American Revolution Museum, Independence Hall, and the Constitution Center in Philadelphia. Mrs. Kelly and Mrs. Kirchhorn took the model United Nations students to Princeton this past week, this past weekend, for a three-day conference. Mrs. Kuzman and Mrs. Skvitsky, Mrs. Skvitsky accompanied their art students to the Museum of Modern Art. They will be displaying their students' work at the Middletown Arts Center later this month. We give a special thanks to Monmouth County Court Services Supervisor, Supervisor Rep. Rebecca Butler, and Court Services Officer Todd Jones for addressing our GLP-3 pathway students and Mr. Scallis' US history students. Henry Harmon, Haley Martin, and Karen McGutten each signed their letters of intent to play soccer and softball, softball at the collegiate level. They are heading to St. Peter's University and Westchester University. Middletown Arts Academy merchandise is now available for sale online. Orders are due by December 7th. Miss Tean, otherwise known as Mrs. Perry, had a ribbon-cutting ceremony after her classroom was transformed into an active learning space, a flexible seat, individual whiteboards, wall whiteboards across the room, and a learning environment conducive to collaboration and discovery-based concept development. The four-way marching band was invited to play at the Prudential Center in the atrium before the Devils Ice Hockey Game on October 25th. More than 20 seniors were conducted into the National Arts Society on October 30. Thirteen Middletown High School North graduates were accepted into the 2018-2019 all-shore course. We will have a fall sports recognition event, a bonfire tomorrow night. The winners of the door decorating contest will also be announced. And on Wednesday, the 21st, there will be a pep rally during the school day. Our production of Clue is scheduled for Friday, November 30th, at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday, December 1st, at 4:00 PM. There will be a senior citizen luncheon and a performance at 1:00 PM on Friday, November 30th. The North Girls Soccer Team ended their incredible season in the Group Three semifinals with a 1-0 loss to Northern Pilots in overtime. The Girls finished the season with a record of 21-2, setting a school record for the most wins in the season, and finished the season as the North Two Group Three sectional state champions, as well as the B-North Division Champions. The Girls were also recipients of the Shore Soccer Officials Association Team Sportsmanship Award for the former Monmouth County, Monmouth County. And the team earned 11 shutouts in 21 games, scoring 76 scores and only giving up 14. And finally, the boys cross-country team went seven out of this season to win the B-North Division Championships. The team placed second overall in the state sectional championships and eighth overall at the Group Three state championships. Our team finished the season ranked fourth in the Shore Conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree. Yes. Happy Thanksgiving.
I see no one here from South, so I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for items or personnel negotiations and contracts.
Salute.
Settle. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Settle. Need this one in the board?
Do you want to?
And Frank?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Mrs. Sales?
Okay, I'd like to just call the meeting back to order. A good notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Esberry Park Trust, the Middletown Patch, the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call. Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Cody? Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Stella?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh? Mrs. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
I'd like to stand to the Punt of Allegiance. The Punt of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go right into our committee of the whole meeting. We'll start with technology.
A couple items from the first agenda. First, what we want to order our goal for qualification. This one, we've all got a new Google Share tool. What this tool allows to do is allows better management of our devices for current and future use. It allows import data, export data, and analyze data. So for example, we move devices to the centralization units, we move our asset management system, and we can also deep provision, provision devices in a whole manner.
Can you turn it up a little so I can hear you?
I think Chris is working to turn that up. Is that better? Not yet. Chris, did you turn that up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, a little bit more.
You might have thought of more.
Okay. Yeah.
Another feature this tool allows us to do is allows us to report on used activity devices. So for instance, we can report back to anyone or administration on the amount of time devices are being used, in the classroom, outside the classroom. Also, we can report back on the amount of activity being used on a student level. So grade levels, we can refer to reports now to show the use of our devices. Finally, one of the additional features that allows us to do is allows us to do location of devices inside or network. G Suite is a cloud-based application, so therefore, if we're looking to locate a device for loss or stolen, or for hidden, or pretty safe, it would underreport back our public IP address, which would just help us within our daily calls. This new tool allows us to not only see who's logged into it, these are the last ten users who logged into it, we can see the duration of time locations were logged into it, and we can pinpoint where the device is. They'll help us when devices are accidentally displaced. They'll help us when brother takes sister's device and then they can't find it. So we'll report back at things like that. It'll make it more efficient and much more useful to use on these devices. Second thing I have tonight is Microsoft Endpoint Protection. Over the last three years, we've used the vast end point protection all over our Microsoft-based devices in the district. Unfortunately, the vast has ceased support of the K12 environment. That forced our hand to move to a different solution than we had with the vast tonight. Luckily, our Microsoft District Agreement allows us access to what's called Microsoft Endpoint Protection. Microsoft Endpoint Protection is same tool as the semantic disorder back in favor of security, but it's likely for us to return license agreements, so there's no additional cost to the district. So we started to deploy it. This can take some time to deploy, probably at least about two or three weeks, because we actually have to physically remove old solution, original device, and put a new solution on. So we're starting out with less than a lot of work on our way down.
How do you account for all the devices there? Do you know everybody has a device?
It's all Windows-based devices. So we have an inventory, and we have a deployment toolkit that we see every computer in the district, and we can go in. We don't actually physically touch them to remove install, we go remotely.
Okay.
So we have a best-of-buy device, we can deploy groups or sections of devices that are on.
Very much, Mrs. Smith.
Okay, Student Services. Abbott, what's that? A little different. I care a little.
We have eight students that are being recommended for home instruction. We have one recommendation where we have this replacement. We had planned to have the presentation on, the parent presentation on autism last Thursday, but because of the weather, that was canceled. So we thought we would do it in December, it's busy for everything, everyone. We thought January would be a better time, so we're looking for a date right now, January, to reschedule that. Joan, did you want to give anything up from our meeting, or do you want to just go with everyone?
Yeah, no, I can just say that we did have a student service committee meeting, and we did meet with our lawyers. It was a very productive meeting, I think everybody was glad that we did that, and I think we should do it more often. We got a lot of good information, we asked a lot of questions, and I think questions that board members have asked us and members in the public, and we got a lot of good answers from. So that was really the biggest part of our meeting, so it was very productive.
I just also wanted to mention that we're going to have the preschool open house on January 16th from 6:00 to 7:00 at New Monmouth. And that's it, that's all that there is for speakers. While we're not here, I might as well do, there's only one item for student activities, so I might as well do that. Mr. Renell and I met with two representatives from the Monmouth County Mental Health Association. They have a grant to do a pilot program, which they've started in a few schools, I think One Ranch, Asbury Park, somewhere else, I don't remember. Oz, basically, it's small group counseling with students with attendance issues. So they were going to be able to offer that to us in two of our schools. We're going to do it at Four, and we're going to do it at North. We have to identify the students with attendance issues, and then they'll have eight group sessions with them, once a week for eight weeks, on, you know, but it's also, it's social-emotional health and, you know, things like that too. But focus on student attendance, getting them in school and staying in school. So we're working with them right now on getting them data and identifying students. So we're hoping to start that in like two weeks or so.
How much do I identify students, give them a credential?
Yes, you have to have a credential. Yes, and there's also a parent component too, where they need a parent, they need a parent. So it's just something else we're adding to help with the social-emotional piece and the attendance piece, both of which are our goals this year.
It's all done by grants.
It's all, yes, there's no cost to us, so.
Mary, I'll just point them, we, the autism presentations, we, I think we talk about the on video.
Yes.
So those type of presentations that are outside our meetings will be on video?
Yes, yes, that will be video, yes.
Hey, break down.
I think Robyn's going to give a report. We had a very productive curriculum committee meeting last week before the snow. But I just want to also add, I would like to remind everyone that next Wednesday, November 28th, will be our High School Pathway and Academy Fair for parents and students interested in possibly enrolling for acceptance in tournament TPS Arts Academy, as well as those seeking entrance into the Early College Academy, or any one of the three pathways that we currently have in district, the GLP3 Government Law and Public Policy, STEM, or Business. And that'll be from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at High School South. And I think homeless have been going out to remind parents since last week.
Okay, so we did, we met, we met on November 14th, and the first thing we discussed was offering new arts academy courses. So there was a proposal for a digital media design and tech and technology course, honors level, and animation and motion graphic course at the honors level, and an honors Dance One course, you know, because we're anticipating starting a dance pathway next year. We also discussed some possible changes to advanced placement course scheduling as a way to recruit more AP students and to increase participation. It'll also help to balance enrollment, because if you have more children taking AP courses, then there'll be fewer in the college prep courses.
And vice versa.
And vice versa. So we're just right now exploring some possibilities. And I believe that convocation was also canceled due to snow.
Yes, we had a staff, there was an after-school professional development scheduled for last Thursday at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, which is being rescheduled. The high school staff was meeting for an AP convocation to learn more about innovative ways to grow our AP courses and student enrollment. So we're scheduling that.
With an expert, Will Smith, not a Fresh Prince fame. Yep, not a Fresh Prince, but.
Super famous.
Just in case you were wondering. Not a Fresh Prince.
Do you have any idea what that's going to do this day?
We're looking at, it's right now, next Wednesday, 2:35 to 3:35, and that'll be at High School South. Because next week, the High School Wordplay will be airing up, and we have to avoid their auditorium. So I will confirm that with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're all very interested.
Yes, and I know.
Okay, in terms of PD, October 18th was the first district-wide professional learning day, and using the PD Hub, teachers were able to select from over 85 training sessions led by teachers and administrators in the district. There'll be another day in December coming up, and then there are two more days after that. They also scheduled PD for paraprofessionals this year, and there will be seven scheduled dates throughout the year. And the first session was October 24th, and was well-attended. It was attended by over 140 paraprofessionals. Secretarial staff will also have three scheduled voluntary days coming up this school year, and they'll discuss school security, My Learning Plan, which is the evaluation software. And the first session will be December 6th. We received an update on the implementation of the GNT program. So this is the first year of implementation. So there'll be two cycles. The first cycle will start January 1st through mid-March, and then March 18th through June 3rd will be the second cycle. And next year, we're anticipating three cycles, because, you know, we will already be adhering to it. This program's available for students in grades one through six, and they'll be eligible, there's prefered participation. Right now, they're screening. For the second cycle, kindergarten students will also be included in this. So the administrators and teachers are using Linkit, which is our data warehouse, to look at multiple data points like Fountas and Pennell, which are the running records, and the DRA art scores, on-demand writing scores. After that, teachers will then screen the eligible students, and it'll, I guess, more of a checklist for teachers. This will also be submitted through Linkit, and teachers can also nominate students. And then finally, INRS meetings will be scheduled to discuss these identified students with parents. And the edtechs will be the ones implementing this program. So they'll work with classroom teachers to create a schedule for push-in or pull-out services. And this is also very, all the edtechs who are implementing this program went to the Rutgers GNT conference. Oh, no, they will, okay, no, they're attending it on 11/30. Just some more upcoming PD. There'll be a full-day PD development for math teachers from a well-known math educator, Graham Fletcher. It'll be December 11th for grades four to five, and it'll be a departmentalized math teachers. And December 12th for grade three math teachers. And some other PD, there'll be a Mid-Atlantic Conference on Personalized Learning, March 14th and 15th, for principals, directors, supervisors, and teachers. And they'll have, you know, a variety to choose from, like refining kindergarten practice.
These are actually workshops that our staff have proposed to facilitate.
Oh, okay, great.
At the conference, because we are a district that a lot of other districts look to for sharing. So this really keeps in line with our future-ready, next-level certification process, which is to become a leader and advocate, not just in our county, but across the state and across the Mid-Atlantic region in and of itself. So these are proposals that our directors, principals, and teachers have submitted to the.
Okay. And also, reading, what does reading workshop look like in a self-contained classroom? In re-based instructional methodology for social studies and science? And there's a huge list, so.
So the benefit of that is when we participate in hosting a session, we then get a reduction in the rate to attend all the other sessions that other people are also hosting, so that we can share out the best practices that we've learned and employed here and refined over the course of the last several years, and we can also learn and grow from other districts and other administrators and teachers for things they have done that maybe didn't work with what we've already focused on.
Again, that's March 14th to 15th, and that was pretty much what we discussed, and the meeting began probably December, January. We have a schedule to take that, but.
Question? I heard you mention the dance, does that mean that we've made a deal with the back?
It's going to come under share services.
The other one is gifted and talented, now that we're moving forward with it. Can you explain to me, maybe, maybe because I've had a couple of parents reach out to me, since we are doing this movement towards personalized individual, individualized learning plans, where we work, how is this not redundant?
So these are a group of students who identify skills that allow them to work more independently. So the edtech will primarily be pushing into the classroom to help facilitate and grow their skill sets to be able to work on projects more independently that are of greater critical thinking and evaluation inquiry processes. So they're not necessarily going to be pulled out. The edtech serves as a resource and a facilitator with the classroom teacher to, and at times may pull the students out to help guide them in further refining their research skills, their analytical skills, so that they can take current projects they're doing in the classroom to the next level. So it's in coordination with what they're doing in the classroom. It's just someone else coming in, just like a reading development teacher might come in and provide mediation for a student for what they're learning in the classroom, close gap. Someone is coming in to facilitate acceleration with these students so that they can take the projects they're currently working on, the skills they're learning. It's not different skills, it's just taking, using those skills at a higher level of application.
So we have seventeen, or twelve grammar schools, if this is from, so are there going to be twelve edtechs, or is they going to be in different schools on different days?
No, our elementary educational technology specialists are assigned to specific schools. So they work within those schools that they're currently assigned to, with those teachers and students. We want, we purposely wanted to make it an approach that it wasn't a standalone program. Because we agree that those aren't necessarily the most beneficial for our students.
Did the identification process change? I thought there was a matrix of some sort. Sounds like we're using Lake, Lake Michigan.
We're using.
We're using data from DRAs and from Fountas and Pennell. That sounds like we're looking at the high test scores again. And so we're saying, okay, you guys are doing well in, you know, ELA and math, and we're going to take you and make you sit more ELA and math. I thought there was supposed to be a matrix of some sort that was supposed to sort out that there's kids that have different skill sets. Has that changed?
No. What, all we've done is we moved that matrix on into an online platform so that we can get the results quicker. So instead of teachers compiling that information in handwriting charts and trying to go to student records or cumulative folders and find reports and information, it's all just in the warehouse. So the Linkit will actually, when we set the parameters or cut scores or different things we're trying to look for, you know, different parameters to first do an initial screening to identify the first round of students who may benefit from this, then Linkit sorts through those test scores, those reports, those previous grades. Those are things we always look at, teachers have to go find all those things in the students' human folder and their own records, the previous teacher's records, or their DRA folders, all those places where those things are housed. So that initial screening just identifies potential candidates. The teachers then apply the characteristics of accelerated learners, that's what Robyn was speaking to, those are behaviors that a test can never determine. Those take an educator to identify using a well-established rubric that is nationally used.
And, I'm sorry, cycle one, is one through five, cycle two?
One through six.
One through six? And then Kimmy Gordon gets added, cycle two, so what's cycle three?
Well, this year we don't have a cycle three, because we're starting it, you know, silly, right? So we had to create, we had to be able to generate the data more formally, and that's what it took, that's the last two months was doing, was creating a process by which we can use, set up to identify the students more formally, to your point. And then we also wanted to leave room for the fact that by looking just at test scores, you may not capture all students, which is why Robyn mentioned the teachers can identify and nominate themselves. If somebody falls off for some reason, you know, off the matrix by looking just at assessment reports and those kinds of things, grades, then the teachers can always nominate a student.
Yeah, it's very inclusive, so.
Kim, isn't the first round being done not by the teachers this time, but by Mrs. Shaw and a group of professionals? And then the next round, the teachers are going to have more input in it?
No, the, well, yes, Ms. Shaw and the committee developed the parameters by which Linkit, the cut scores and the different things, that Linkit will initially analyze the data, the multiple measures in the matrix, and then the teachers, the teachers will always provide that secondary level of input through the characteristics of accelerated learners and talented learners.
Because I know when I asked about parental rollout, they said that all concerns will be going not to the teachers or the principals, but to her and her committee.
Yes, for initial identification, the committee has established the parameters by which Linkit identifies the potential students. The teachers get that report, and then they act on the behaviors piece to the checklist that they keep. So parents will be notified through an intervention IRS, through the INRS committee at the schools, and they'll be invited in to discuss the possibility of their students participating. And how also parents can support students who have this natural inquisitiveness and level of skill sets.
Right, they said that there was going to be a component where they can give parents advice, if your students aren't there yet, what you could do to help them possibly get them.
Yeah. And as for any parent who maybe says, how could my student wasn't captured in this initial screening? Or nominated by their teacher.
So then next year, when would the evaluations take place?
Well, we'll have the data, we'll know what our, what the matrix is already, so it'll be in place. So we'll be able to generate scores probably by the end of September, beginning of October, once all the previous year's information is rolled in and captured. And at the initial September, early October assessments are done, like the DRA, the beginning of your math inventory exams.
In what cycle of the fall?
Yeah. But the goal here is to be, as Robyn said, as inclusive as possible. Because really, the ultimate goal is, is that by the edtechs pushing in, the teacher can learn how to facilitate these types of projects and these types of inquiry processes with the students, so that it's something that all students can benefit from. It's a best practice that all students can benefit from.
Which was back to your point. I apologize, special education and general education?
Everybody, yep. You could be doubly gifted.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, no, just I think that's.
On a different criteria?
No, same criteria.
Same criteria for general education and special education.
Yeah, I teach GNT, and I have students with IEPs in my programs.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, facilities.
We don't have any items on, we'll need to end this one on the facilities. We'll give an update on the ESA project, the three components of it, the solar, the lighting, and HVAC. Regarding the solar project, in addition to the schools that I believe we reported out were already being turned on, their arrays were being turned on, which was Fairview, New Monmouth, Middletown Village, Port Monmouth, and Napa Sink, and River Plaza, scheduled to be energized this week. Our Thor, Thompson, and Nutt Block, with the remaining schools having some construction or final inspections or some meter installs still pending, but we still project that all of that work will be done by the end of December, so we'll be hoping there's any change in that, some yard clearing completion on that project. As far as the lighting goes, we have the regular portion that was done by, it's being done by MJF, which is the contractor who's doing most of the schools, except for the six. six elementaries that will be done through the direct install program, which is being done by a different contractor, Hudson Mechanical. The direct install portion of the project is completed, we just have a punch list to take care of, and we will be signing off on the substitution, completes this week, so they can submit for the state, because that program, if you remember, is the region where the state is paying seventy percent of the expense, and we are paying thirty, so we have not paid any of that to this point, but there at the point where they're submitting for completion status, and that would be lighting at Rumple Plaza, Harmony, Nut Swamp, Port Lomond, Winado, and New Lomond. The rest of the schools are being done by the other contractor that we have here, and they are continuing to work in the middle schools and the high schools, replacing boughs and lights, and they're making progress after school and in the evenings, and will be continuing at least until December working on it. As far as the HVAC goes, they're continuing to work on the controls portion. Again, they are nearing completion on that as well. We will have another update next week, I'm excited how many more weeks, so we're in on that, but they are getting to the end of their work as well. So, I have, and we're going to have a facilities meeting on December ten, so we will be starting to talk about items for next year's budget and some other planning issues.
We will have a facilities meeting.
Well, we were, we were originally going to plan it in at High School South, but I think at this point, we are trying to also arrange a number of shared services or confirm shared services meeting for that evening, so if we're going to do that, we have asked that now, that we can meet at Central Office, and then we can have our meeting immediately after that. So if we met at from six to seven with shared services, we can start the facilities meeting at seven.
Can we get the township to come over to South? Because the reason we wanted to do it at South was we had planned to take a tour of the video compression facilities, so...
So we could request that.
Yeah, might be nice for those guys to come to the school.
Okay, all right. Well, I haven't heard about confirmation plans, and anyway, you don't know, certain venue could be changed.
So we could plan, pencil it in, set.
Yes. And then in addition to the update on the ESIP project, we just wanted to bring to the board's attention, you know, that we are, we do have, over at Thompson, we have, you know, the large event that we have every year, Granny's Attic, this past weekend, as a result of that, you know, there were some, were some cars driving, you know, cars driving on field and parking, so we are looking at what we need to do forward to make those repairs, maybe maybe get the fields back where they need to be. We have talked about as an administrative team, a couple of different things, you know, originally when we had talked about this event for this year, we had discussed moving it out of Thompson over to South, because it seems that that event was also our part of the facility. That did not happen this year going forward, I think, you know, we think it's important that we are going to be looking at doing that, because it's become apparent, I mean, there's many different scenarios that we discussed, for shuttling people to and from the school and inducing the parking on that campus, that because of scheduling and just the sheer volume of the event, it's very difficult to make that happen, so, you know, we are going to be looking at perhaps having to hold it at one of the high schools next year, because Thompson, again, has just become too small for that event as well.
I can add, I'm sorry, I'll just add, you want to go first, Mike?
Well, I should, I think it's to add some color, because I don't know if everybody in the room or on the board went over to Thompson. I was over there in the afternoon, there were cars parked, and they're probably a combination of vendors as well as attendees, but they were parked in both pay parking lots on basketball courts, on every grass field, with the exception of the old track field, which is what I call it, into the right, but the up and to the left, the large multipurpose field was still filled with cars, with cars going up and down that inclines, you know, rampway to get into the upper field. And of course, I was hearing from the folks in my neighborhood, from my family, saying what's going on, I thought that these fields were supposed to be protected, and of course, my understanding is that we had some calls from some of the sports parents, you know, we had essentially given them assurances that we would not be using those fields for parking, and they saw the parking there, and of course, they reached out to say what's going on. So, you know, it was a bit of a black mark, but I know you're aware of this, I'm not, I'm not chastising you, I'm just saying it was a bit of a black mark, and it did sort of cut these multiple angles, so it's something we have to fix.
It was our understanding up until about a week before the event, that there was going to be more shuttling arranged or other parking lots, and then there was discussions, scheduling conflicts and things at the, between buildings and people attending the event, and the parking then migrated back to the facility, which wasn't our intention, you know, when we first started talking about it this summer. So, we were going to have to trust that going forward.
Yeah, and just a quick question. If we were, we're trying to preserve the streets, and we're doing all this work, why don't we just broke up?
The main, the field that's getting the renovation, that's the field that, you know, Nick just said, and that they kept that field, of course, but the bottom problem was, there just wasn't enough parking without using the shuttle locations that they had originally thought they were going to use without using those fields, there just isn't enough places to park. It's not a good answer, but that's just the way that it's just the situation.
They were, were trucks there this year or something?
Yep.
There was trucks outside this year.
On the basketball court.
Yeah, that took up spaces too.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with things, but the bottom line is that Granny's Attic is very valuable to the school community.
Oh, yes.
It does great things for Thompson, but it has simply outgrown, you know...
What's it going to do to South?
South has more regenaziums, lots of hallways and cafeteria, you know, it's got the abundant space to serve Thompson.
I think the other important thing too, is that we know when Granny's Attic is over here.
Yes.
We need to make sure that in that vicinity where that's going on, there shouldn't be any other events scheduled, because everybody goes there, you know, it's a positive thing, and we're just making more travel. When you saw the traffic on Mill Tumlin Front Road, you knew how successful it was going to be that day. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's good, good perspective. I also think, you know, moving forward to be talking about a three-part approach. Another thing that was pointed out to me by a number of different sources, was the flow of traffic in and out. So I think for like, really biggest major events, like we used to do, for big events in the past, we had in times, we used to do for the races.
Race race.
Race race. We need to meet also with the police department and discuss the flow of traffic pattern, when parking is going to be, that, that's one of the questions number one. Number two, we have to make sure that all the other buildings are already stated by the prepared, that's what I was going to say, for are coordinated, so that we don't overschedule on section or one side of town. It's one thing to have on one side of town, a major event, and, you know, we are forty-two square miles, we could handle another event on another side of town, but to have two towns within a half, I mean, to have two major events within a half mile of each other was too much for the infrastructure to be able to handle, whether that's from the traffic standpoint or the parking standpoint, and we, we reflectively looked at that, we administered changes before as well.
It was, sorry, it was the play and the GSA conference at South, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think two shows of the play, because the Thursday night was canceled too.
No, no, it's snowing.
Double performances on Saturday.
That's the other thing that you were just talking about, the other reason why we couldn't do any of that over there, is because we had the snow on Thursday. So, not only was there that event, it was the snow on Thursday, so which meant that we had a night event, and then on Saturday, just, we just, we overscheduled the area, you know, we didn't, we have to learn from it in the long.
And also the construction at the train station, the people going to Granny's Attic, they didn't even realize the shuttle parking was there, because they were detoured another way.
Right.
So it was, you know, it was very confusing.
So, I mean, so, I guess, I agree with all the remediation plans, I think are important, but how do we get building-level administrations, Mr. Curry, as well as I'm sure the Thompson PTA is going to have to have a, you know, a voice in this as well, you know, I would assume we'd want to get their buy-in to go over to South tomorrow, or, you know, as soon as possible, so how do we go about it?
Well, we'll have to decide first with Mr. Curry.
Yeah, first, it's a building-level discussion, it's PFF. And what happens to be, the block, better word than damage from these cars, is it assessed, or?
Right, our facilities, the parking was out there today, and we have come up with a plan to renovate the, renovate the town.
And that plan will be within the allocated budget that we have for the fields?
Yes, they're going to, they're going to, we have equipment in house, so they can go out there and smooth things out, and then, you know, receive, you know, to accumulate there.
Okay.
Good finance, right, that's all I have for facilities. Finance, we have one item on the agenda for this month, the cost of evacuation drills. We are going to be having a committee meeting next Tuesday, where we will have in-depth insurance presentation from our broker, Brandon Brown, and address other items, including looking forward to the budget and so forth. In addition, we have our financial reports for the month on the agenda, but that's, that's all we have for finances one.
Shared services.
We had shared service meeting at Luister Township. It was a pretty full business, go over, and I didn't want to take too much time, but I would say overall, it was a productive meeting, one of the better meetings we've had with them. Unfortunately, as you see, we're going to be in general, the in-depth conclusion on a lot of items, a lot of things are still open to be discussed. As Robin and Kim had brought up, use of the MAC for Dance Studio was addressed. We do not have agreement with the township yet on this. We voiced our desire to be able to use the MAC during the day, and it's not being scheduled for Dance Studio space, which is now a professional, it would be for this coming school year in order to support the Dance Academy. The township is taking that under advisement, there was some, some wrapping up of the use of that space for the lease of the Link Cross Library, so we're trying to work through that discussion with the township. The item of class three officers came up again, our council, as well as the township's council are working through contract language on that. We're still seeking further information around exact costs, and it's the position of our committee, that we want to make this as shared services possible, meaning the cost should be borne both by Board of Education as well, as well as the township. We talked about the training lead time, as well as the hiring lead time, and the escalated costs of class three officers in multiple districts in Allen County, bring class threes in. We also shared some learnings we got down at the school boards, about what other districts are doing in the state, so this is still a conversation to continue, something that we're at for so.
Is there a timeline for that? I think that means kind of over three minutes. So is there any kind of deadline of when we're going to do this? You know, at the end of the day, I don't, taxpayers are going to pay for it one way or the other, and it's about bigger, you know, I think the safety of the students has to be considered, and I'm hoping this becomes something where there's a drop dead deadline, a simple contract can be negotiated and done. I'm not saying in general, there's got to be a deadline, we're just continuing on, we just have to continue on, 2019, right? So if there's some issue that we need to resolve, we should figure out what that is, hopefully we can sort of articulate in one of these meetings, whether it's the township meeting or this meeting, what the exact points are, because I think the taxpayers' residents should know, this is what's holding.
Right, so, we did discuss time, we didn't talk about a deadline. One of the reasons that we didn't talk about a deadline is that I don't believe that there was an awareness on the township committees, first of all, the township committees part about what the lead time is for a class three officer on, the fact that there's a statement that they need to afford in our training, the fact that those train directions are booked solid for the next three months, and the state is looking at that section, so that they can get those pushed out, maybe to the local academy, for example, bring out the run out forward. We also talked about the fact that with our budget situation, I know you make a good point, the taxpayer will shoulder it one way or another, but if the taxpayer shoulders it via the Board of Education, that's money that we have to take out of another program, we just be having two percent cap, attachments not to cover, you know, the same way that we are from a budgetary perspective, so, understanding that we don't want to put this on a, you know, perpetual can-kicking routine, we want to get something done, I don't think it would be prudent to do something and to establish a deadline that sort of boxes us and we're still making the best decision for the students and for the taxpayers, so there's, your concern was definitely part of the conversation. We talked about polling places, the use of schools for polling places, and we actually got a bit of education, I don't think that we understood this, so, as the board and as the public is aware, there, we do have polling for Election Day being held in our schools, and I think fourteen, fifteen of seventeen schools, and I think Mr. Dowling could vouch for the number of districts that are done here, Middletown North. Apparently there is a county law that states that polling place must be within a certain distance of polling district which it serves, and the way that Middletown is laid out, the way that publicly accessible buildings are, there are actually not enough non-school buildings to support polling places in our township. So, what we were looking to do is find a way to get polling places out of the schools, and the township basically came back and said, you can get polling places out of many of your schools, but not all of them, and if we can't get them out of all of them, then there's no benefit to us. The idea would be to potentially not have the entire week off, the quote, Jersey Week, and a revolution, and, so I don't think that we're going to really be pursuing that any further, but it was the education, the money to the room. Couple more points, I'm sorry, this is going longer than I thought. We did talk about some fees, administrative fees that the township charges, it's a forty percent surcharge, I believe, on instances where the Department of Education utilizes township resources, such as police and our events, so Granny's Attic would be an interesting case, where there was a police truck, box truck, and I counted, I counted seven officers that were alive, they were permitted to drop off by channel, some of them, I believe, were class twos, not all of them full-time, but they were employed by the township, and so therefore, we pay an administrative fee on top of the hourly fee that we charge to obtain their services. We basically pushed that to the township and said that, you know, as Board of Education, as a, as a municipal body here, we believe that we should be exempted or give a reduced fee. They didn't really have a lot on hand to discuss that, so they're going to come back with some numbers after the next meeting. But again, we're just pushing for budgetary reductions, we're spending a lot of money relatively on this. Fine, they could place for that. Granny's Attic for parent events, does it, do the PTAs pay for that? The PTAs would pay for that, but for athletic events, for example...
The district ones.
No, no, I get it, I'm saying, you know, Granny's Attic. Right, so for Granny's Attic, where the PTAs that earn money, the PFF, whatever it is, is looking to earn money for Thompson, but when they purchase the police officers, they actually have to pay three percent of the surcharge.
So they have to pay forty percent?
Everybody does.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure that out. You may remember there is an issue about some fields, field usage, Stevens Park, soccer fields, football fields. We discussed with the township, the utilization of existing athletic fields within school district property in order to supplement the already existing fields that the township has. Without getting into specifics, because there are no firm plans laid out, what the township wants to do, they're not looking to build out new fields, what they're looking to do is utilize existing fields at some of our schools, renovate them, and get them compliant with, I'm trying to remember what they said, get them compliant with the national standards for different sports, so for example, soccer has different field sizes for different age groups, so they're trying to lay out, you know, in an overhead view or a blueprint, what fields they can fit, on what, what, what's, athletic fields they can fit on what properties. We had a big discussion about this, the part of it was that we don't want to impact neighborhoods that are already impacted by fields, so, I know that was a big issue with Stevens Park. We also would look for infrastructure upgrades, so for example, one of the, one of the schools that was banging about a lot, the past few weeks, Bayview Elementary, if we're going to do upgrades at Bayview Elementary, we want to also add an increase in parking, increase in walkways, right now, you know, people are walking across the fields, and some people Right now, people are walking across the fields and some people drive across the fields to put cones and things out, so we want to cut that down as well and create better access. And overall, just general improvements to the area so that it doesn't negatively impact the neighborhoods as well as be positively impacting the school property itself. So that's also an ongoing discussion with township engineers, part putting together some blueprints, and let's say something concrete, the committee will have to act to the board here.
Ask a question. The fields, will they do the soccer fields that they're looking to, and about the baseball fields, as far as your case still come back from?
It came up in terms of usage, so apparently there's not an issue with permitting baseball fields, the inventory of baseball fields they have. So, so again, going back to the, you know, one of the proposals that I know was floating around was taking two existing baseball fields and converting them to soccer. But they feel that they can do that without negatively impacting the baseball leagues.
So township through NYAA baseball, is that the township?
It's permitted through the township.
That comes out of, but, Bodman?
It's permitted through the township, not only Bodman.
It's all over.
Can we, can I ask, because I may or may not be here by the time we finish this, that, no, no, seriously, that we be, as a board, better and more proactive in that the residents, I see what I'm putting in our audience here, will actually live behind whichever school that we decide to do these upgrades to? Can we just inform them? Can we just send them a letter and let them know what's going on?
I think we have a policy on that, a neighborhood policy, so before any work's done, they have to be notified.
It's been an issue in the past, though, when they're doing that, and I just think it's...
So that came, so that came up in the discussion, and a lot of it was obviously informed by the, by the pushback to Stevens Park. We said very clearly, you know, when we look at the different places where you can put the fields, you see neighborhoods that are around it. We don't want to put fields in places where there are already permanent parking fields, so we don't want to introduce more traffic. We want to make sure that we're adding parking, so we do communicate, we have a neighborhood policy. We want to have a good story to tell and say that Board of Education is looking out for the neighborhoods to hear the things that we've, you know, negotiated into the deal. So, yes, so to answer your question, yes.
Something I think...
So every time the township wants to run a neighborhood, we are going to provide a neighborhood policy.
Well, we can discuss that, part of the discussion, yeah.
Really should come from both of you together, saying that we're working together to do these upgrades, to make these fields look nice for your kids and, you know, for our town. It should really come from both of us.
And I, I think when you're given, given the reports at the workshop like tonight, everything's out in the open, it's more transparent, and going forward, notifying the residents should be a top priority because it's going to be a major changeover on those fields.
That's enough, I'm not thinking, but I wouldn't hesitate to know about the residents regardless. The township, I think that we're capable of putting together a beneficial package for the residents and we want it to be transparent so that they can come to the line and be back to us in their thoughts on it.
Do you think there's a lot of use, I mean, there's fields on most schools, do you think there's a lot of, example, a school that hasn't been used in years, do you think there's going to be a lot of that?
None of that was considered.
Like, for Bayview, you have, Bayview, Y-Soc.
Yeah, forever.
So do you think there's going to be any ones where people are like, how do you see somebody playing?
No, it may be just more efficiently utilized, to your point.
Yeah, we might be utilizing soccer.
Maybe it was a center of the conversation, but we made very clear that going forward, any additional fields that we work on together with the township, we want to put places where there are already kids playing for that exact reason, so we don't get, so we're saying that we don't, you know, we never have caravans of, my car is coming here on Saturday mornings, we don't have...
I say that because, for example, we're Plaza, right, Plaza Baseball is going, this field's actually used, right? And that one's not used, I don't think.
Right, and we wouldn't...
And there's a huge space down there.
Right, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't want a Steve River Plaza used largely. I was just, parking, yeah, unless we had a good story to tell about, who's the parking, who's the egress, the ingress, lighting, we've got the residents of that area, they already get overrun by soccer fields, so...
No, no, I'm just, I was just saying, pointing out where there are residents of that one.
And Ocean Avenue is a good consideration, although you have to work on the parking. They have a nice big piece of property there, many soccer fields that are already there. It's another great, but again, you have to work on the parking.
The way the big thing was, if we can get the township to invest in places where our schools will be using during the day, and then the rest of the township gets to use it during, during the weekends, that's a win for everybody.
Absolutely.
And that's how the process should go.
So I think the conversation that we had too about the, you know, the whole thing was that we needed more fields. The way they explained it to us about, you know, each field doesn't have to be the same size depending on who's playing on it, that's how they're planning on getting more fields in one area.
Yeah.
Because we're just going to go down to, you know, way too big.
So that's, I'm sorry.
No, I have another question, not about that, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, the only last item is December tenth is our plans, next meeting, waiting on confirmation from the township, so that's...
They had a meeting tonight, so they're going probably to discuss like we're discussing the things that came out of that meeting. So hopefully on next meeting, we can get some answers from both sides.
So I don't know if this is a question so much as just throwing it out there so you're aware, Amy. I assume because the negotiations aren't finalized with MAC, that someone has reached out to a local dance company asking about pricing? And I had someone from another local, and they put it on social media, and now it's a thing. And that, you know, there's several Middletown Dance Academies, they all would like the opportunity to bid on this, or however you're doing it, but somehow, one of them was asked, they had been very informally, that that one person threw it up on Facebook, and now I had people reaching out to me saying, hey, I want to be considered, or, you know, like, so just throwing it out there that that's an issue.
And people are just me as well?
I don't know.
Well, that, I think it seems like you have a number of people who are, you know, if something didn't work out with the MAC, you have a number of local businesses that would love this. I think it's a great thing and would like to be a part of it, and so I'm just, I just hope that there's some kind of process that we're using, because we do have several in Middletown Dance Companies, so, or spaces, and I think that all would actually be considered.
So that, and we already did personnel and close session. All right, so now, we're going to open the floor to the public for an opportunity to speak on agenda, I have a call me at this time. I can't see no one at the mic. We'll close the public portion. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session of ten twenty-nine and the regular voting meeting of ten twenty-nine.
So, second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
As a president's report, I have a few things to report. First of all, I would like to wish Danielle a very happy birthday. Today's her birthday. Secondly, I would like to welcome Deborah Wright and Tom Giamo and congratulate them on your win on the election. And then I would like to say that I attended the South Play last week, it was incredible, like always, great turnout. The North Play is coming up November thirtieth and December first, so if you haven't gotten tickets or you didn't mark it on your calendar, do so because they're, it's really a great show. I attended both North and South, had signings of athletes last week and this week. These kids are going to incredible places and have had such great accomplishments during this year and their last four years that I congratulate them all. It's amazing to hear their coaches speak about their accomplishments, it's really great. We talked a little bit about Granny's Attic, I was there this weekend, I know with a few other board members, it was a huge success. Those women did a great job and I commend them for all the hard work they put into it. I would like everybody to mark their calendars for December twelfth, our voting meeting. We will be having a presentation discussing the middle school schedule, strategic planning, and district goals. So if you can't make the fifth, try to, you know, mark the calendar for the talk because it should be a very interesting meeting. Don't forget about the Thanksgiving Day game, the tickets are on sale during the school day. I know at High School North, I haven't seen anything for High School South, but I know you can come during the school day into the main office and purchase tickets there ahead of time. Don't wait till the day up, the lines are too long. If you really want to get in and see that game, have your ticket before you get there. The whole community comes out, it's a great, great thing. Second of all, I would like to say, as Thanksgiving's coming, as a district, we have a lot to be thankful for, we have accomplished a lot this year. I'd like to thank our teachers, professionals, custodians, administrators, central office, everybody has done a lot to provide for our students. And as a district, we really do have a lot to be thankful for. And I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Okay, so moving on, we need a motion for number one through four under the business administrator.
So move, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Under the report of the superintendent, I need a motion for number one through seven.
Through six.
Oh, through six? Oh, yeah, six, one through six.
So move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on one.
Yeah, I am, I'm opposed on number one also. Abstentions. Report of the superintendent.
I just want to point out that under the superintendent, I have started a blog, and I have a guest blogger this month, Jessica Saw, administrator, who is talking about the vision for professional development. She oversees that. I'd ask everyone to take a look for that under the, on the website, under the superintendent's page, or on social media, we put it out through MTBS Prime, as well as my Twitter account. We also post it on Facebook, so look for that. And I really, all the other things I had, Joan, you can nicely hear the report of that on, did a great job. I want to wish everyone in our community a happy Thanksgiving, and that's what I have to say.
Okay, under number twelve, there's nothing under technology, so we need a motion for twelve B through E.
So, second.
Discussion. I'm just going to say I'm going to be abstaining on letter E, and I will share my concerns privately. All in favor? Anybody opposed? An abstention, so I'm abstaining on E. I need a motion for F one.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion for letter G one, student activities.
So move, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. We have nothing to vote on negotiations, so personnel, I need a motion for number one through twelve.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Yes.
There is something in the back, the...
That was under there.
Okay.
But this is just the reporting, sorry.
That was, that was related to number nine, the personnel.
Okay.
Okay, gay business? New business?
I had one thing, Ms. Camulus was there with me also. We both went to the New Jersey Gay Straight Alliance Forum, it's usually, you know, held different places every year. This year, Middletown South hosted, it was a great event. Mr. Kamulas did a fantastic job organizing it, and, you know, guest speakers, and buses coming with students, parents, teachers from all over New Jersey, so it was very well attended, that's the question.
I want to bring up something about old, that I'll go, number four, we have our people with us, and I mentioned that, I would like us to do team building experiences together. Stella, how do you feel about golf?
Sure. Is golf better? Sure.
Better than...
Top golf.
Better than the track tour.
Escape room, but, yeah, golf is cool.
I'll do golf. Okay, so...
Mini or regular?
Regular golf?
Yes. I don't care, I'm fine with either.
No, where are we going to go with regular golf? We got to do something to call it now. I'm thinking of top golf. What? What would you say?
Monster minigolf? No.
Is that the one where they can judge on the swing exactly?
Yeah, 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 but we're all going to do this together. Now, I have a question. I'm terrible at golf, but it's team building, we're supposed to help each other.
Right, do good.
I'm, right.
I don't know if I'm a bad guy.
You are a bad guy, of course you are a bad guy. Do you think we could get this, as far as if I get stuff done at the end of November, do you think we could make a date that we could do this as a board?
For the, for the end of November?
The end of November, because what's...
It has to be the next week, and every night we have something going.
So?
The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, there's something going every night.
Your way.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're, and we're not going to get it in December, right?
Maybe we start it in early January.
Would you like me to do?
After the reorg meeting.
After the January. Danielle, would you like to come with us to, you could bond with us.
I won't be here early January, but thank you.
Okay, no problem. But, okay, so January, I'm going to get some dates, if anybody wants to email me with some dates that we could do for you or whatever, let me get the prices, I'll let you know, and in January, we're going to come to you. So get ready.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, Vanessa. Okay, thank you. Amy, I have to give you paperwork on this, I have to put it on folders or something.
I have copies of the goals too. Yes, I have copies of the others too.
Okay, seeing no other newer or old business, open it up to the public for comments.
Not quite. Sue Grant, one Halliburton, she's prepared comments, Sasha, with throwing the AP role, I think that's a wonderful idea, I'm all excited about that. I had a question for you, and I'm not sure if this is the time to ask, or is it okay to ask it right now? Challenging every student is a great idea, and I had loved the idea of getting every child to be the best that they can be. Will any class support be available for our kids who aren't doubly gifted, maybe in baby classes, if they're, if the modifications are necessary?
I don't know, I don't know if we're answering questions or if we're not at this time.
It's just something to consider, if you haven't thought about it yet, you can get back to me. Okay, thank you. And then the other question that I have is really more common, you know, in the last couple of months, I've covered a lot of the challenges, I've seen a lot of sidebars, and I know that there's a time and place for sidebars, but in the past, we've spent a lot of, um, trying hours, time, running, eliminating sidebars from our contracts. Moving forward, maybe we just keep a list of what we've got going, so that when the contracts come up for negotiations, eliminating them gets us the best. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one at the mic, there's one other piece of information that the board though, on Mrs. Gallagher, you've just reminded me, the reorg meeting, and Devon Town are here, so we cannot get this. It's scheduled for the third, and there's a conflict for Mrs. Gallagher, and she would like to know if we could reschedule it for the second instead of the third. Everybody could just kind of check your calendars? Right, it was the second one, because the third is, the third is the third.
Actually, I think that might be a conflict for Mr. Taylor.
Because otherwise, we have to go to the next weekend.
I think it has to go by the second.
How do we do it by the second?
Yes. So if nobody has a problem, we can schedule it January second.
The second's good?
Just the reorg, it's not going to be a meeting. No, it's just supposed to be the reorg.
I think if we go play golf after that, you don't want to play golf.
That might be a great day to play golf, Miss Kennedy.
Even more. You're right.
I might want to consider adding to your shared services for January second for the next meeting, and there has been a number of suggestions, a number of people suggested in the public, that when we do our board calendar for our board meeting dates, that maybe we think about coordinating them, or at least running a task with township committee, so that we don't have meetings the same days that they do, because people who want to be involved can't be here and there at the same time. And we've never done it before, I don't think, but it might be something to consider, you know...
Should it be at seven?
Yeah, if you looked.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, so we're set on that. Thank you, Amy, for the reminder.
Thanks.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn the meeting. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Happy Thanksgiving. So ready?